We call the Board of Aldermen meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for January 21, 2014. Whenever one rise and face a flag for the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Clark, would you lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First I am on the agenda is approval of the minutes, the regular board meeting minutes from January 7th, 2014. Any corrections, additions, or concerns?
Motion for approval of the minutes.
Second, motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the minutes from January 7th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer is absent. Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Item 3B is a work session minutes from January 14th, 2014.
Make a motion that we pass the minutes from the January 14th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the work session minutes from January 14th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
I'm staying, I was absent.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with one abstention and one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way that we can have the map from that work session either kept on our Dropbox or sent separately? Because I think as people ask questions, the map would be interesting to have available to us easily.
So, and let me see if I understand what you're asking, a map?
Yeah, there, on the works, in the work session, in the very bottom, if you scroll down, there's a map that we had at the work session that showed the various trunk lines that we were proposing.
Okay.
I just think it would be nice to have it so in case somebody wants to take a look at it or want to reference it.
You should be able to open it and save it in iBooks and then you can permanently keep it there.
But you wanted to share with the public?
Well, yeah, if somebody wants to know.
I think we can do that, can't we?
How about if we take, because there were notes from that as well that would be really good points.
Right.
How about if we take those notes and the map and put them into a separate folder?
That'd be great.
Over on the front of the Dropbox with, maybe call it wastewater system improvements or something?
Right.
And then it would stay there.
And then can we print those off of there?
Sure.
Okay.
But you do have, you can't put it into your Chrome app.
Well, you'll have to teach me that some other time.
Some other time.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
We're going to work on that, see if we can get it done. I'm on item four, adoption of the five-year strategic plan. Who's, is someone going to address that in particular? Or someone have questions on it, maybe I should say.
Well, I think from a general statement for the public's knowledge, the five-year strategic plan is something that as a Board of Aldermen we put together based on what we felt the needs were, both short-term and long-term. And what we're looking at now is how we prioritize those going forward so that as a city we have some direction on where we want to go. So I'll make a motion that we accept the strategic plan, the five-year strategic plan established on January 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Cornell to accept the adoption of the five-year strategic plan as presented on January 21, 2014. Any further discussion, concerns, or input? Not, I'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five, zero, with one absent. Item five on the agenda is hearing from the public, and at this time we extend a courtesy to the public. If you would like to address the board on any topic, we ask you to come forward to the podium, state your name and the purpose of your business. The only thing is, we ask you to limit your remarks to five minutes or less. We'll probably put you on the clock and keep tabs on you, so. Anybody like to address the Board of Aldermen? Please do so at this time. Not hearing from anyone from the public, I'll extend the same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. If anybody wants to address to the, anything to the public, I'm going to start with Alderman Flake and work our way back. Alderman Flake?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Alderman Cornell?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing?
Nothing during this segment, let's put it that way.
Alderman Kastlerly?
Wow, I'll take a pass too.
Holy, usual.
We're just doing this to shock you.
Alderman Ock?
Nothing.
Alderman Clark?
I don't want to be the only one.
They're awful quiet tonight. I'm starting to get worried now. I'm going to move on to seven and the mayor's report to the board, and I always have something, so I'm going to run through mine real quick. One of the things I want to tell the public is the filing period for the election for the city offices has ended today at 5:00. The Ward Three race that Alderman Dreyer now occupies, no one filed against him, so he'll, he gets a free pass on that one. The Alderman Two race, two people have filed, Rick Brohigginjohn and Eric Schluter, am I saying that right?
Which one?
Oh, Eric Schluter.
Yes, Schluter.
Schluter. They've both filed. Ward One is Ron Jurgismeyer and Tony Hawley have both filed. And on the mayor's race, Don Boring has filed and myself. I think it's good for the public to have options. It's always encouraging to see more than one candidate file for office, so. We got some, we got three good races going on there. The other thing I want to make note to the public is, at our last board meeting, we talked about drafting a policy for public workspeople and city police when they're faced with extreme weather conditions and it forces them to stay overnight, stay put. And I think the general consensus from the board was, we do not want them sleeping on the floor of the police department or down in the public works department. We would rather them get a motel or hotel room where after a 12-hour shift or 16-hour shift, at least they can catch a couple hours' sleep and maybe take a shower and clean up before they go back on duty. So, that's brought on a lot of public comments. Even Channel Four thought it was newsworthy and they came out and interviewed me yesterday. They said it was kind of unusual for a municipality to offer that to their people, and we didn't think it was that big a deal. We haven't needed it in the last 20 years. This snowstorm two weeks ago was probably the most severe weather we've had in the last 20. We might not need it for another 20, but we do want it available to our employees should that happen, so. I had several emails on it, some good, some bad. Couple emails said, why don't we partner up with the fire department or with the ambulance department and see if they'd have a spare room or something possible? That's an option, but we are going to work on a policy to have something in place so these guys have a place to go on extreme emergency situations, so.
And Mayor, do you have an update on that? We have a meeting scheduled for Friday with Mike Elbe from the fire department.
Oh, great.
For that very purpose.
For that discussion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so maybe there will be something more logical come out of that, so, very good.
Let's see, did we, on the agenda, we have a use tax ordinance, but I did want to talk
about the use tax for the City of Warrenton. We were able to meet here this past week. I think Alderman Clark was available, Terry Thorne was available, Melody was available, and we met with the City of Truesdale, with the Village of Innsbruck. And Wright City, I don't think had a representative there. And the use tax issue-wise on the agenda to repeal our ordinance is, all the information we got from the Missouri Municipal League and the legislative branch is that we need to wait till November to put that back on the ballot. There seems to be a lot of controversy and concern over that right now, whether it's valid to put it on now or whether we should wait. So, I think the general feeling on all three cities was that we were going to wait till November. Do you have a comment on that?
I just, I want to make a point of clarification because I think, you know, the Missouri Municipal League put together this packet of information that they distributed at the conference that you went to, Mayor, and talked about the use tax. And I want to make sure it's very clear to the public that there's a lot of confusion going on out there because Terry asked me, she wanted me to be thoroughly versed in the use tax and what it did and what it didn't do, and why we're holding off. Why would we hold off now? On August 28th, 2013, the legislature passed House Bill Number 184. And essentially, and I think this is where a lot of the confusion is with the use tax, and one of the reasons I think it's prudent to wait is the House Bill 184 changed the law, and what it did is, anything that was titled, which is a vehicle, a trailer, a outboard motor, anything that is titled in the state of Missouri is no longer, as of August 28th, 2013, is no longer subject to a use tax. So, when you talk about use tax, you're only talking about tangible personal property. Use tax, and then what really then becomes the issue is the law that was passed, whether or not it's legal. We're receiving revenue from what would traditionally have been thought of as a use tax on titled vehicles. We're receiving that, and so I told Terry, I break it down, if there's a title tax and there's a use tax. I know it's really confusing, but I want to make sure it's very clear that if we had the use tax on the ballot, it would not apply to motor vehicles at all. It would only apply to tangible personal property. We are receiving money without passing the use tax right now for things that really people have put out there as a reason to pass the use tax. So, we're already receiving that income. There's a lot of issues, potential issues, in my opinion, with regards to this legislation and whether or not it violates Hancock Amendment, which I think the state legislature and the courts have to figure out. But right now, we are receiving this titling tax. Any vehicle brought out of state that is titled at a residence in Missouri or in Warrenton, we are receiving what would have traditionally been a use tax without that use tax ever being on the ballot. So, it's not as though we're not capturing a certain amount of revenue because we're not putting this on the ballot. And I think the issues are, it's legislation that I think quite honestly is poorly written and has some serious issues that I think may not survive the next couple of years. So, that's one of the reasons Terry and I talked and I advised, we hold off, we wait, and we see what really truly happens. But for the public's concern, we are already capturing that revenue, what had traditionally would have been a use tax on titled items, titled vehicles and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any more questions for Counselor Gruel? That seemed to be the gist of our conversation with the other three municipalities. Everybody was pretty uncertain about what to do, and, you know, if we put on the ballot for April, is it not going to help us? And then we'd have to come back and do it again in November? So, I think the general agreement was...
Well, what we would have put on the ballot would have been a use tax.
Right.
Which really would have been any purchase over $2,000, like a park for a car, but not a car.
But not a car.
The use tax, the court rule doesn't apply to vehicles. That's why this titling tax came in. And so I think there's this, I want to make sure people understand, there's two separate distinct things here because, you know, people assume, well, that means people who purchase out of state are not paying a tax here locally, a use tax. Well, they're paying the titling tax which replaces the use tax. So, we're not losing anything. We got to wait and see how this comes out through the courts to really make a prudent decision for whether or not it's smart to move forward.
I think we're moving in the right direction there. Thank you, Mr. Gruel. That's all I have. I'm going to move down to item eight, approval for liquor by the drink, liquor license for Cadillac Bar and Grill LLC located at 108 East Boozlick Avenue. Is there anyone that wants to speak on behalf of that? Any comments from the board?
Did this go before P and zoning board for the liquor license, or just for the site?
Just for the site plan, not the liquor license.
Okay.
Well, I of course have something to say. You know, this puts me in a very difficult position. I have personally, and this board has, I believe, been very active in seeking businesses to come to town, being supportive of the idea of businesses to come to town. I have spent the last probably three to four weeks seeking input from citizens of the city and citizens of the area. There were some concerns raised at the planning and zoning meeting by at least one board member. I believe the conditional use permit passed four to three maybe. So, it certainly was not what I expect usually comes to us unanimous. This, I believe, is a unique situation in that the applicant for this liquor license at this establishment has been in our community before. And there were concerns about the operation before that was brought up during the P and Z meeting. Mr. Gibson was present and answered some of those questions posed to him. Through my professional experience, it's been my understanding and concern, some illicit activities took place at the previous establishment, Kicker's Bar and Grill. I've spoken with some of the neighbors of that previous establishment who said life got exponentially better when that business closed and moved. So, it puts me in a conflicting position of trying to encourage business people to come to our town and invest in our community because I do believe that there is a good community to be served, but balancing that out with what is the right business for the right location. I have some concerns about either Mr. Gibson's ability or willingness to abide by the conditions of the liquor license that I can't reconcile with supporting this.
Could you explain when you say there were some concerns on the part of neighbors? When I was on the board, the business, Kicker's, was run in the industrial park?
Correct.
So, when you say neighbors, you're talking about other businesses as opposed to residential households, or are you talking about residential households?
Businesses.
Well, you know, I was on the board when Kicker's ran, and obviously, from I guess from a policing perspective, I know there was always, I know several times officers were sent down there to find stuff, and if I recall right, never found anything, and they just showed up. Is that a fair, I mean, I kind of read through the notes that are here, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I actually wasn't here back then, so I'm going based on, from talking to officers that were here back then. I think the general consensus was that when an officer walked in in uniform, typically everything was in order. I believe that on at least one occasion, and it could have been more than one, undercover officers were sent in and did in fact observe illegal activity. What escapes me is why there were never any charges brought. I don't, I don't see anything in the records about why that was, although if that were activity that were going on on my watch, there would certainly be seeking charges. Very aggressive.
Of course, again, you know, this is 2003, 2004. My recollection was even when the detective went in, really nothing was found that charges could be brought about. Of course, I'll admit, I'm older and my memory isn't as good, but I'm not... I mean, John, you were around, weren't you, in 2003? Is that your recollection? Oh, Fred certainly was. Is that your recollection? Or I, wrong?
I kind of agree with what you're saying. I mean, they did go down for periodic walk-throughs and everything else, but there wasn't anything coming about.
Yeah.
I don't know for what reason, I really don't know.
Well, let me ask you a question, John. I'm guessing that your position would be to vote no for the liquor license.
Yes.
So, I guess the question I have to ask Counselor is, from a legal perspective, I was always under the impression it's very difficult to deny liquor licenses, at least that's what I said to you before. From a legal perspective, what are we looking at here?
Well, you have discretionary votes and you have ministerial votes. Ministerial votes, you know, would be, if they meet every qualification, you don't really have a legal right. You may be denying them a right if you vote no. I would say this is, has more discretionary aspect in it than ministerial because there is a provision in the code that talks about the moral character of the applicant related to the liquor license. Now, to surmise what the legality of whether it's an appropriate vote morally or in morally, I couldn't, you know, speculate as to that. But it's not just a ministerial, we meet the application guidelines. There is a provision in there that has some ambiguity to say, you know, you know, there could be a reason you could vote no. Whether or not this is sufficient enough with 44 months of service and 31 significant calls to be bad moral character or directed to Berlin Gibson, that's where I would caution you because I think the chief's report says Gibson's criminal history indicates that he has never been convicted or charged with any crimes or infractions related to his business. And that would concern me from a legal perspective would be, there's no thing specific to the applicant.
I think in the past, you know, the perspective of the attorney at the time for the city was it's more of an administrative function. If you can't find issues relative to the applicant, you really go out thin water to deny liquor licenses?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with that, I would agree with that recommendation. And I would say, for example, you have full discretion in accepting a street from a neighborhood. You can say yes or no for any reason. You know, employment is a employment of will situation, yes or no for any reason. This, there are some vested rights, that he has met some qualifications. It's not as black and white.
Right.
To be purely administrative, it has, well, it has more discretion in it than a purely ministerial, which is, for example, a building permit or a dumpster permit. I pay my 50 bucks, I get a dumpster permit. Or, we don't have a dumpster permit, but I pay my 50 bucks, I get a building permit. Like I said, I think my advice to the board is to look at the applicant's moral character and possibly not the incidents that occurred at the place, because I don't know that there's sufficient indications of moral character issues in the report about the applicant that I would be comfortable in a challenge in a lawsuit.
Chief Howdyshell, you did the background check on the applicant?
The detective bureau did.
Anything jump up as far as like felonies or anything like that that we should be concerned with?
You know, there's a significant number of disturbances, which, you know, is not unusual for a bar. This number may be a little bit higher than normal. You know, the Kicker's location here in Warrenton had three reports of looting this. You know, I know that was a unique business down there at the time, and I presume that that type of situation is not going to be present in this location on Main Street. You know, there was a robbery there, there was a couple weapons offenses. You know, I mean, yes, there were some felonies that occurred.
When you talk about some looting this and that the business was unique, how was it unique?
Well, I believe that in that location, again, I wasn't working here at the time, but it was my understanding that there was exotic dancing that took place in that location. It's fairly unique, especially for our community.
Is it unique or illegal?
Well, I don't, I don't believe it's illegal by ordinance, is it?
Well, I mean, honestly, my response on that would be, and I talked to the chief about this, never in my time, because I was the municipal prosecutor at the time, and for a period of time, I believe I was the assistant prosecutor for Mike's office, I don't believe I ever saw a single report that talked about obscenity or what was going on or reports specific to topless dancing or anything like that. So, the difficult part for me in answering that question, whether it was legal or illegal, is I don't know the facts or the circumstances of the situation, and we're so far removed from it at this point that there's no ability to do a follow-up or really look at what it was. I don't recall ever seeing any police report related to this type of thing. Now, obviously, I heard rumors, I heard rumors from law enforcement and whatnot, but regarding what occurred down there being illegal or illegal, I would, you know, once again, I'd say the chief put together a report that says, these are the incident reports that were reported and that are documented, and that's what I think is relevant to that consideration. And I know that's a long way of saying I'm not going to give you an answer about legal or illegal, but I don't think it's fair to answer that question with Mr. Gibson as an applicant when I don't even know what occurred or what the specific facts of it were.
But I think we've kind of touched base on the issue and the concerns. Rightfully so, I think every single person here has a concern to make the right decision legally, but also based on our constituents and what this city needs. We do not need, in downtown Warrenton, the same facility that we've had. But that being said, we don't have any intent to do that. So, from a legal standpoint, although I am not pleased with the prospect of that showing up downtown, I am also in the position that as a board, we need to now take a very good hard look at what our ordinances say and make sure our ordinance is up to our standards of what we want to have in our town. And once we look at our ordinances, and if we find that our ordinances need to be stricter in nature to meet our expectations, we deal with that, and if our expectations are not being upheld by any business in our city, then we address that through the proper channels. But from a legal standpoint, I really have a hard time saying no to this liquor license based on the applicant that we have in front of us. Completely understand Mr. Cornell's concerns, I have the same exact concerns, and so do many of the people that we talk to.
Any other concerns from down there?
Is this a, but Counselor, this is an initial local ordinance, isn't it? Doesn't state statute control a lot of the stuff that we're really talking about that would be over-carrying?
Sure, absolutely. But there's also, I mean, strictly going on rumors, for example, there was pasties worn to get around, you know, restrictions against, you know, certain clothing or whatnot. Yeah, state statute would definitely be something, but, you know, one of the things when I was reviewing liquor license application, or reviewing our liquor license ordinance and what we have in the books and what we don't is, there are a lot of like areas, like the Lake of the Ozarks for example, that have local ordinances related to, you know, similar behavior as what was allegedly occurred at Mr. Gibson's old establishment. So, there would be a way we could look at, you know, local ordinance that would not necessarily be completely, you know, regulated by the state, that we could have some authority, you know, at a local level to regulate it or enforce it. And go over it with the chief and put something together, and, you know, look at what we have on the books already and what we could do to improve it.
Would businesses be grandfathered in if we were to put something more strict on, or they would just have to comply with the norm?
They would have to be in compliance with the norm. There would be no legal non-conforming use that would occur that, well, we did this before, that's not there now. Legal non-conforming use has absolutely no implication in that situation.
Alderman Clark, any comments?
I have to concur what Karen said. I have a hard time not granting a liquor license. I've had very few people call and raise a concern about the person going into Sportsman's or wherever they're going to call it now, to the bar. So, at this point, and he's never been convicted of anything, it's a lot of hearsay or confirmed. So, last time I checked, you're still innocent until proven guilty. So, I mean, it's out there. If you don't keep it where it should be, I'm sure we'll figure a way to close it down.
Alderman Flake, any concerns?
I kind of agree with what Alderman Clark said, so I'll just leave my comments at that.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the liquor by the drink license for Cadillac Bar and Grill LLC located at 108 East Coon Slip. Any more concerns or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Motion carried four to one with one exception. You want to comment on your no vote, or you already feel comfortable with what you said?
Yeah. I hope you prove me wrong, Mr. Gibson.
It's up to him, it's in his, all of his court.
And I would like to make the comment that I think we move up to high priority looking at the ordinances and laws of the city.
Okay, I'm on item nine. Dottie Phillips, recreational director, in annual report.
You should have a copy of the two thousand and thirteen annual report that lists some of the larger programs and activities that we did over the past year. Unless you have any specific questions?
You've been busy, or at least on paper, it looks like you've been busy, if you accomplished all these things and got them all done.
It's been a fun year.
This is otherwise known as Dottie's meeting.
Pardon me?
This is normally known as Dottie's meeting. She keeps us busy.
I didn't, I don't understand what you're saying.
Don't worry about it.
Any questions for Dottie on her annual report? You're good.
The second item that I have is the proposal for the farmer's market manager. We had a group of people from the Warren County Farmer's Market who typically is, they have a market in Wright City. They approached us with a proposal to be the, to manage our market out here, and we met with them and went over all of the different items that we had concerns with and that they had concerns with to try to come to a conclusion on how we could continue to offer the farmer's market, hopefully grow it, and also meet their needs to be able to operate within our city requirements. So, we actually, several of the representatives from the farmer's markets, they're here tonight, including Mr. John Clare, who would be the market master if they were to take over our farmer's market here. We went through the code for the farmer's market license, and basically, the three major changes that we've made to it is that the wording has been changed to include, to allow for homemade arts and crafts.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have anything in our packet on this?
Yes, it's down in the ordinance. It's a lot of detail on that.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm sorry.
Well, you paused on that. Am I have some concerns about it, to be honest with you, having read through most of it. One is if we're licensing somebody or hiring a contractor to give them authority to do something, it seems like there's a lot of rules for them to work under, and some of them I wonder how practical they are. For example, once the license is issued, this is section oh four oh, part A one, you know, he has to provide a list of vendors within twenty-four hours of the event. Well, what happens if a farmer calls up the night of the farmer's market and says, hey, I just got a great crop of X, Y, Z in, can I come? And he has to say, well, you're not on the twenty-four hour list. That seems kind of an awkward way to run, it doesn't give the market master a whole lot of flexibility, I would think, I don't do this, but, I mean, that's the way I look at it. And then there's just some of the representations that are made here, and I know for the local farmer, it's critical that this be a local farmer's market as opposed to a farmer's market, and there's some people in the local farmer's market who don't want a distributor there, you know, who I assume collects stuff from other farmer's markets and brings it in as a distributor. You know, my wife shops there a lot, and from a consumer's perspective, I don't want anybody there who can be there and give me a product. And if I choose to buy from Farmer Smith because I know him, he's in the community, that's my purchasing option, and why should the market be left, why should other people be left out of the market? I have a problem with that from a business perspective, too. So, there's just two things that concern me about the ordinance.
Okay. Well, to address the first one is the twenty-four hour prior notice. Basically, what he has to do is, prior to the first week of the season, he will have to provide us with a list of all of those who have registered.
Right.
He will then be able to, after that first week, prior to the second week, he can give us a list, or the third week, it doesn't, once we get the first list, as long as he adds any new ones to it that he gets over the next course of five or six months, that's all we need, and we need to be able to keep a list of everybody who's there so that should there be some sort of issue with a product, somebody gets sick from something, we're able to identify who that person or who those people are who were there. So, that is the purpose of doing that, so we know who is going to be there, who has been there.
Is that something we need twenty-four hour notice on?
Because the way it reads, it reads like, in fact, if you look at every event being a particular day, a particular Saturday, it reads like, I think it goes Saturday, he's going to have to update the list on a twenty-four hour notice, so the city knows who's there, if I'm reading this right.
My question would be, or at least it was my understanding that city staff and the proposed market manager had worked on this together. I guess my question would be for the market manager, are these doable, do you have any issue with these conditions?
I do. On the twenty-four hour advance notice, that's almost impossible to do.
We decided to do that in arrears, didn't we?
Right, yeah. We would provide after the market's over with with a list of vendors that were there.
Sir, could you come to the podium, because we're taping this and we're not picking up your sound back there?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Give us your comments again, I missed some of that, too.
Well, the twenty-four hour advance notice is, I believe, is just almost impossible to do. We're always getting people who come in late, we get people who want to set up just for today's market, but they don't want to join our group, which, it's only thirty dollars for a whole year, and that also includes the winter market if we have one. You also mentioned something about other vendors coming in?
Yeah, my understanding, in the past, there were some concerns by some local farmers that maybe a distributor may come in, and that was against the spirit of the local market.
That is.
And I understand that, I just don't know from a consumer's perspective if that's the case.
Yeah, but if we do that, then we're opening up a precedence for other people to come in, and then before you know it, we don't have a farmer's market, we got a flea market.
Flea market.
Well, but you control that with your product, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a flea, I mean, if you just have them sell produce, that's not a flea market.
Yeah, I could care less if Will McDonald in Montgomery City comes over here and sells some of his stuff at our market, and our local farmers wouldn't care either. You know, you got to look at, it's all local grown foods. You'll never find at one of our markets a banana, a pineapple, it's not locally grown.
The purpose of that regulation is to prevent somebody from going down to Sulard, buying a truck full of produce, driving out here and competing with the local farmer, correct?
We run into that on sweet corn, when sweet corn comes available. We'll get a bunch of people who come in with a truckload, and they unload it, and it may take them two weeks, and then they're out of sweet corn, and we won't see them again until next year. Doesn't matter.
Watermelon from Arkansas, or? Well, I guess that's a question what's local, too. I mean, if a person, if a person were to go out and go up into the northwest part of the, you know, go to some of the farms out there and pick up produce and all that and bring it down for resale, that's local to the state, it's not local to Warren County, they're resellers, is what they are, but you would prefer to keep the market pure in the sense that...
It has to be homegrown.
Yes.
It is not wholesale. We have the opportunity or the right to go to their farm and look at their, where they're doing things, to see if they are, in fact, growing radishes, tomatoes, or whatever it is that they're trying to sell.
And these are, these are the regulations that you use at the Wright City Farmer's Market?
Right, and we would do the same thing here.
So, the only issue you have is the twenty-four hour notice?
Pre-notice, that's...
Is hard to live by?
When would you, when would you propose to notify, if you can't do the twenty-four hours prior, would it be the day following or the next business day following?
I could do it within twenty-four hours if you had to have it that soon, but I would prefer a couple days anyway.
You could actually do it that day, because you...
I could do it, I could do it, yes. I could do it right then and there, too.
You could get your name and phone number and stuff.
We don't have a problem changing it to twenty-four hours after.
Okay.
Before you came up, you had, you said you had several things. If I did mishear it, you said before you got, you said there were several things in here that addressed one, is there others, or is that the only issue?
Well, I think it was the wholesale thing, or resale, and twenty-four hours, and forgive me, but I'm fairly old.
I can relate, I can relate.
And I agree, I understand your point, Gary, as far as free shopping and all, but I do appreciate the fact that when I've gone to the farmer's market and a guy pulls up with a truck and it's in boxes, and I know they just got from the market in St. Louis, it's not homegrown to me. And so, I do understand that concern, I understand your point, I understand your point.
We do monitor our vendors, you know, and we just don't let anybody in.
Like your vendors, like over in Calhoun County that grow peaches, they're welcome to come?
Yes.
Or Martha'sville, where they grow apples.
Peaches, peaches is, are one of the products that, there's a lot of sales on it. That, sweet corn.
Tomatoes.
Tomatoes are always, always good. Plants or, or the tomato itself.
Your organization is interested in taking over the market?
I believe so. We will still have to take a vote on it ourselves, which will be coming up, I believe, the nineteenth of next month. And I was going, I told Dottie I would get with her the next day, and I've also invited her to come to the meeting.
So, basically, the first step for us, and being able to do this, is to get our code adjusted so that it will meet their needs as well. The only other two changes really to it were that we would go from a five-month license to a six-month license, which would better cover their entire season, and then it'll also become a no-fee license rather than a license that's charged two hundred dollars.
Why wouldn't we just go to an annual license? Because to me, it seems like if you go six months, you could have a long growing season, and you run the market beyond, or is that not...
We're normally five months.
Normally five months.
Part of the concern was originally when we did the farmer's market license, which was, there had been some other vendors that, there was a concern that they would create a year-round farmer's market on the corner of the street or whatnot, to really try to make this really about being a farmer's market and not, you know, selling pumpkins or Christmas trees and whatnot in a year-round fashion. Is there a reason we did that?
We have an issue with, there's a lot of rules in here with our city statutes, and we're really advocating to this group, if they sign the deal, to enforce our statute. So, they're going to, they're going to go out and turn down people from coming in who, I assume for all good reasons, but what if there's a dispute where somebody says, no, I grow this, you were at the house and you didn't see it, but I do this? Are we then involved in that decision? Are we kind of giving, advocating our responsibility to the third party, or is that an issue?
I mean, I think that's a great point. Alderman Ock, do we want to write in here some type of dispute resolution mechanism if there's a citizen or a potential vendor that has an issue that they can voice their complaint to the director or the recreational director or whatnot? I'm sure, do you guys have your own mechanism within your group for dispute resolution?
Yeah, it all, it all comes to me, and then I have to make a decision as to who's right, and of course, customers are always right, even when they're wrong.
To me, it seemed like we were trying to run a business through ordinance, so would a statute that would be less restrictive be better off? So, you're engaging an organization to run the market under some general guidelines, and then they run it. And it's just like with the city swimming pool, we hire a contract company to run the pool, we don't say, well, your people have to wear this swimming suit, they have to do this, they have to do that. So, it seems like the ordinance is really pushing a lot of business decisions on the market, and shouldn't the market be given a little bit more freedom and less ordinances and statute?
Really, the whole, the whole issue with the farmer's market came about when the statute changed and required for anyone that was not selling homemade goods, that was not a farmer selling homemade goods, were required to file a no tax due certificate. And so, that put a burden on the city before we could issue any type of license to do that. We had to put some type of regulations in place to meet the statutory requirements from the state of Missouri when that was implemented. We also had the concern, and there's always been a concern about safety of products coming out of there that I'm sure you guys have as well, because the customer is always right, the concern that, the biggest concern as a staff when originally this ordinance was written was, we're going to have to come back here, or if somebody gets sick from a product bought on city property with city licensing approval and whatnot. So, I think what Dottie tried to do here, it was, I think it was much lengthier than it was before, wasn't it, Dottie, or is this pretty similar to the way it was before? It's pretty similar, it was, to try to really only address this public safety issue and the city's requirement with the no tax due, whatnot, and really give them the freedom to kind of operate the way they are. And I think really, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're okay with the parameters the city's giving you with the ordinance written that you met and talked with Dottie about, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, because those are things they're probably already doing anyway.
We're doing them anyway, there's state laws that we have to...
Yeah, probably pretty similar to other communities you operate a farmer's market in that, you know, have regulations that there's some, you know, hey, you've got to make sure that, you know, this, this, and this.
For example, people selling eggs, they have to have a license to do that, and they have to follow certain things, they got to keep those eggs at such and such a temperature, which out, out in the open like that, you know, you use a lot of ice chests and stuff to make sure that you maintain at least the minimum on that.
And I think the regulations, Alderman Ock, are the homegrown products is really something your group really requires, right?
Right.
That was something that you guys wanted, correct, was the homegrown, that it was restricted to only homegrown products.
Right.
The second one, the right of the city to inspect at a reasonable time, was obviously it's our property, we want to make sure we inspect it. The third one, no products, produce, or no person offering goods or produce for resale, once again, this is probably something you guys wanted with no...
We have that in our bylaws.
In your bylaws.
It has to be made by the person, now you can buy, for example, I'm into stained glass, I do stained glass, which is a little bit different than everyone else. I buy my glass, I don't make it, but I pay my taxes and stuff on that glass, just like anyone would do, and then I go home and I use it as a crafting for me, then if I resell that piece, then I can go buy some more stained glass and lead and all this other stuff that goes along with it. But, so, you know, I basically, I'm retired, I'm retired military, plus I'm retired Social Security, so I don't have it as bad as a lot of people do, but I like doing... But I like doing this just to earn an extra dollar. But it's basically, it's a labor of love, you take and sell your product and put that money back into buying more to make other things.
So the only, only issue you have with this whole deal would be changing the ordinance, instead of giving 24 hours advance notice, you would want maybe 24 hours after the event?
After.
Is that something we can-
Yeah, well, I think if there's an ordinance on for tonight, which I think is what they want to move forward with so they can have their vote, is what we would just change is prior to the license event, in that part, we say filing a license event.
Okay.
And also the six-month versus five.
No, that's already, that's in there?
It's already in there.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, for your input, we appreciate it. Okay, Dottie, is that all?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I'm going down to number 10, Director of Operations, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is the list of accomplishments for the city for 2013. We try in January of every year to put this together, and it always amazes us that there are things that we forgot about that happen throughout the year. So you have that in your packet. I was surprised when we looked at the number of new businesses that opened, that there's actually 10 new businesses that opened in 2013, and several fairly large accomplishments for many of the departments. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I missed the aging made easy. Where's that?
Aging made easy?
Uh-huh.
That's the first new business you have listed.
I can't tell you where that is or who that is. Michelle put this list together.
We need to find it.
Some of us more than others.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
So I, I am not aware of where that's at.
I'm, I'm kind of like you, Terry, when I saw this list, you know, I'm thinking, "We didn't do much last year until I saw the list," and we were busier than you think.
It's kind of amazing when you put it all together.
Pretty good.
What we did was list the major accomplishments on your first page, and then there are what we call departmental achievements for each department on the pages following.
One of the things I wish I mentioned in the Alderman's comments, and I'll mention them now, that I did get a lot of feedback over the last couple of weeks, is the recreation newsletter that went out and the program guide, got a lot of positive feedback off of that.
It was a major accomplishment for the recreation department. So unless you have any questions on that, we will make that available on the website.
We just need to find out where aging made easy is.
I can find that out, you have Michelle report that all to you.
Okay.
Jack says he believes it's, it was on Steinhegen. Also had for you the annual administrative report, you'll notice this evening that there is the annual summary report from all the departments. Again, just an effort, well, two reasons really, to recap what happened in those departments over the year, but also so that Melody doesn't have to keep the individual department reports permanently, she can keep the summary report each year, and it reduces our requirement for space for keeping all of those reports. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the administrative department report as well.
There's a, I mean, there's a gap between the first report on the new businesses and then the total business licenses, it lists us 100 new.
Well, many of those are not storefront businesses.
Oh, okay, so you're just listing storefront-
Painting contractors, electricians, people who don't actually have-
So there's a lot more activity going on in town than is represented by the 13 new storefront businesses.
Right.
Okay, right.
Okay. Next for you, I have a request to approve the payment for the Industrial Development Authority loan for the property over on Pinney Street. That payment is due the end of the month and the, at some point, we will have this accomplished, so that, this is the one, if you remember, that the city is in the process of taking ownership of the property. We hope to have that on for next meeting, but for now, we need to make the loan payment, which totals $66,703.14.
This is principal and interest?
That's correct.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we pay the $66,703.14 payment on the IDA property.
Second.
We have a second one. Second. I have a motion by Alderman Kastlerly, second by Alderman Clark, to approve the payment on the IDA property in the amount of $66,703.14. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flick?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kastlerly?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one E.
Next for you, I have information on a program from the Warren County Health Department. Department has met with Stacy White last week, who came over and talked to us about their Ready, Set, Fit Program. It is something that they received some grant funding for, and they are providing this work site wellness program to businesses in the community. A lot of benefits of that and a lot of assistance with getting certain employee programs for wellness instituted for what our employees might be interested in actually participating in. It's a no-cost program to us, and what they will do is give some questionnaires to our employees, have them complete those, then they will analyze those and determine what interest our employees have, what programs they would be interested in being involved in. And then they will help us establish those programs and monitor them along with us. So I believe this could be beneficial, I think we might have some employees who are interested in participating, and there's certainly no reason why we would not at least put this out there to our employees and see what kind of feedback we get.
Would this take place, you know, before working hours, or during working hours, or after working hours?
I think that we have to wait and see.
See what they do.
What our employees are interested in. They had a very long list of different options that are out there, some involve walking programs during lunchtime, some involve programs after work, I think there's a whole gamut of things that they have the ability to assist us with getting implemented. It really depends though on what the interest is that our employees have.
Would this include elected officials, because several of the board has shown some interest in that?
I think it's certainly good.
Do you think they would, they could participate?
I see no reason why.
See, do as he has them?
Talk about yourself there.
I'm getting him.
So we will move forward with getting the survey out to our employees and seeing what kind of interest level we have and what programs that they might be interested in getting involved in. And for any of you who want to participate, you're certainly welcome.
Operational updates?
I have a couple of things there, most important of which is just some information from the work session that we had on January 14th. It was a discussion in regard to the wastewater treatment plant and collection system improvements that our engineers have been working on for a number of months now. They've provided us with a report that indicates that for the next five years, that there are some major improvements that are necessary, and surprising to me was that of the total volume of improvements, that the majority of those improvements actually are to the interceptor lines on the east, on the east and west of the city. The interceptor lines are those that go from the southern part of the city and carry the sewage up to the treatment plant that's north of town. On both east and west, those lines are overburdened at this point, and in cases where there's heavy rainfall or a rain event of significance, those lines have the inability to be able to successfully transfer the sewer to the plant. So the majority of what we will be asking the voters to approve in the bond issue is really to add parallel lines on both the east and west of the city to ensure that we have the capacity to transfer the sewage to the north to the plant. Also included in that is some improvements to our wastewater treatment plant, but those are actually minimal in comparison to what the line additions would be. And then also, very important, the replacement of the Water Street lift station. For those who aren't aware or don't remember, the Water Street lift station is where we've had significant issues with the inability to transfer, especially during rain events, and to make sure that there aren't sewer backups and there aren't problems with getting that out of that area and moved out to the treatment plant. So the replacement of that lift station, along with increasing the capacity of those lines, should go a very long way in resolving that issue. The engineers did break the projects into three different priority levels, so we will start with the first priority level, which will be that Water Street lift station, the east interceptor line, and some work on where the sewage goes into the treatment plant with the bar screen. The second priority projects are the west interceptor line, and then working with the biosolids to reduce them to a dry sludge as opposed to a wet sludge that we currently have. And then the third priority project would be a second phase of the west interceptor line, and then some minor work on some process controls, upgrades at the treatment plant. It is a five-year plan. We talked about at best, if we started on this work tomorrow, how long would it take to complete that first portion? It takes a very long time when you're talking about dealing with engineers and DNR, and several of these pieces involve either working with the railroad or bores under Interstate 70 and working with MODOT on that, so none of that happens extremely quickly, but we will be starting that process. Total project cost, this is the construction and, and associated engineering, is $13,545,000. When you add the cost for bond issuance and those additional type fees and the requirement to have a reserve fund, the total bond issue would be $15,275,000. And we will, we have later on tonight an ordinance authorizing that to be placed on the ballot for April, and it will be going to the voters at that point in time. It is important that this bond issue is approved by the voters, it does not raise the rates, there's no tax increase associated with it, but the benefit to having a bond issue approved by the voters is that it saves interest costs on the financing of the loan. So we're saving the users in our water and source system interest by having a voter-approved bond issue.
I think, I think it's important to kind of reiterate what Terry's saying, because I think a few months ago, if you watch this on TV, we had a number of property owners who came in with water sewer issues who are in the area of the Water Street Lift Station. And from my, my perspective on the board is, when people come in like that, the first thing you do is challenge them to make sure it's not something they did, because you don't want the taxpayers to pay for something that an individual is responsible for. And then when you realize that it's a bigger project, you feel bad because just by doing all the things we're trying to do, looking at running cameras through the line, you feel like you're that, kind of like that kid standing with his finger in the dyke before the dam gives out. And this really addresses the problem of the dam cracking, it really addresses the needs that we have to do to make sure those issues don't continually come before the board and the community. And I think it's, it's really a critical bond issue that we, we approach this, because I think it will make a difference, certainly in a number of lives, and if we don't address this, we'll continue to see people coming before the board with issues that you kind of feel helpless to address. So this is really important, I think as the voters look at this, they really need to focus on the importance of this issue.
I agree with you, and I think the other thing that it really brought to mind when we saw the report, that I had no ability, had no thought process of in the past, my belief was when we saw this engineering report, that it would say the majority of what needed to happen was at the treatment plant location, that it was upgrades to the pieces of equipment out there. Absolute opposite was true when the report came out, that it is not our treatment plant that needs the significant dollars of improvement, it's actually the lines that transfer it to get it out there to be treated. So where we currently have issues in some locations, it is very clear from talking to the engineers, if we don't undertake this and get these improvements made, not only are those residents going to continue to see issues that currently are, but as the city, the population grows, that's going to become a wider impact on a larger area, because the lines can only transfer so much. So I think the potential is, if this goes unattended to over a long period of time into the future, you could see the area that's impacted become larger.
Right. I think, I think people don't realize, if you stand at, basically at the corner of Kroger's, Main Street, and 47, everything in that area is watershed that flows down to that pump station down there, whether it's rain runoff or sewer, and we have to pump that uphill, basically to the Highway 70, and then it flows downhill to the sewer plant. And what Terry's talking about is, we have the ability to pump it up the hill, but what we're pumping it into isn't big enough to allow it to take all the water and the fluids into to get up on top of the hill, and that's really what we're focusing on, is making those pipes wider, or putting a dual pipe in so that station can really do what it's there for.
That's correct.
I, I agree with you, this is our future. If, if we don't address this, and we have this law going on right now where we're not growing very fast, but we're not going to have that luxury forever, and if we don't address this now, when, when the growth mode comes back and hits us, we're not going to be able to handle it. So not much choice, I think we have to address it. You said this, we talked about doing this in the three-phase step, one, one priority, two priority, what do you think the total length of time is to address all three phases?
Boy.
From start, from start to finish?
They call it a five-year plan. I said to all of you the other night that I believe if we started last week after the meeting, three years from Phase One would be being very optimistic. Do you concur with that?
Yes.
So I think if we can get Phase One accomplished in three years, I will feel like we've been extremely successful in pushing that forward. Somewhere before we accomplish Phase One, we very feasibly could start looking at Phase Two. Now, what really determines how quickly you can get it done is how much money you have to spend for debt service. So right now, as our financial status stands, we have the ability without major increases in rates to fund Phase One, Priority One. How much we're willing to increase our rates to increase our available revenue will depend on how quickly we start on Phase Two. So as our population grows, as our users grow in the next two or three years, that will give us additional ability to start funding more debt service, but that's a difficult question to answer because we don't have the ability to predict how fast our population and our users are going to grow. The board always has the option of, you know, increasing rates to account for that, but we've always been very conservative in our rate increases. We've never had, in the last 10 years, anything more than a 5% increase. I don't see us doing anything double-digit unless we really change our philosophy. So I think it will all be dependent upon what available funds we have to fund the debt service for it. And I know that doesn't really answer your question in years, but there's too many unknowns to truly be able- to truly be able to track that.
Yeah. I just, I basically want the public to understand what we're dealing with here and how we're going about it.
Yeah, I think the other thing I think the public needs to know is, this is a no-rate increase bond issue.
Correct.
We're holding the first part of the project down, cost down, by basically having the city crew do a lot of work where they can on the parallel interceptor line, going from the pump station out to Highway 70, as a way to hold cost down. And the juggling act will be continually doing the services they do in town, plus this new expansion. So, there'll be some challenges for Guy's department over here in terms of how we handle that. But it makes the cost effective to the point where we don't have to come in for additional rate increases just for this.
Yeah. Truthfully, there is, there is some work in Phase One, in the dollars that you all have looked at, being done by our staff, but it's not as much as we originally thought. Originally, we thought in order to be able to do anything, this was going to have to be the project for our public works crew almost solely for the next two years. And I don't know that that's really feasible to do, but if that's what would have been required to get it done, we'd have had to seriously consider that. So, we are doing everything we can to try to get it done, keep the rates down, and be able to accomplish what needs to be done.
Any other questions?
I think the other point, just to make sure it gets driven home, is, it's not, the Phase One is something that has to be done. It doesn't, it's not really we have a choice.
Not an option.
It's not an option. The option is, is how we're going to pay for it. And by passing the bond issue is the cheapest way to finance it.
Absolutely. Any comments down here?
Well, I think too, as far as the timeframe of the projects and that, two of the most important things that's going to eat up a lot of the time is going to be getting the borrowing permits under the railroad and I-70. And we know from past experience that they do not move fast, those two agencies, MODOT and the railroad, is real slow. And we found that out with North Market Street over here, trying to get that over. This cross, so that's going to eat up a lot of the time. So, the sooner it passes, and the sooner we get started, the better it will be, because it's, that eats up a lot of the time right there.
Yes, it does. It's very frustrating.
Is it, Carrie?
That's it?
Can I ask a question I can ask, you or Terry? There was a meeting of the Montgomery County Economic Development and the Warren County Economic Development Groups last week. I didn't see in the packet any updated information. Could you share? And it was addressing the I-70 corridor concerns.
Corridor.
Could you update us, one of the two of you that were there?
I was not there.
Alderman Clark was there and myself were able to attend. Basically, the issue was the I-70 corridor from St. Charles County to Independence, Missouri, that the concern is, you know, that's our lifeblood here, we want to make sure we save that. And the basic comment at the end of the meeting was, the only way to save it is a one-cent sales tax statewide. And it wouldn't, would not be a dedicated sales tax to just I-70, it would be a dedicated sales tax to all the roads in the state of Missouri. Hopefully, I-70 would be first priority and go from there. So, it was just a joint effort to put our minds together and see about saving I-70. That was basically the topic, how do we save Interstate 70? So, good point. And I forgot about including that on an informational packet to you two, so.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Good, good, good update on the bond project.
Thank you.
Jack, are you ready for us?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Board. First I have my annual department report. Do you have any questions? I can gladly answer them for you.
Looks like you've been busy.
Yes, sir.
One of these days, that's going to change, it's going to get busier.
Busy.
Just a question of when. Any questions for Jack on the annual department report?
Jack, did we get 13 squad court all settled and remedied at the?
The variance request was approved at the special meeting on the 16th.
Thank you.
Next, I have a request for approval of the demolition policy.
Is this new or just revised?
New. I do not believe there was an existing demolition policy.
Is it new because of issues, or is it new because we realized we didn't have a policy?
New because I believe we realized there was no policy in place.
Well, this would be a good time to have one.
Mm-hmm.
Is this something that has to be approved by the board? Or is this just a statement of what your policy is?
All of our formal policies we bring to the board for approval.
Make a motion, we approve the demolition policy as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kesslerly, to approve that the demolition policy as submitted. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent.
Next, I have a request for approval of commercial site as-built policy.
Same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
You found this just by experience? That we didn't have one?
Well, we get as-built drawings when the commercial sites are put in, but we did not have an official policy to make sure we're doing the same thing on every project, to make sure we have a checklist, to make sure nothing gets overlooked.
I'll make a motion that we accept the approval of the commercial site as-built policy.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kesslerly, seconded by Alderman Flank, to approve the commercial site as-built policy. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. AutoCAD software.
Next, I have a request for approval to purchase AutoCAD software. In your packet, it shows two different companies. I did contact three and become aware that DLT Solutions is the master government reseller for Autodesk. So, no matter, if I contacted 20 companies, all of the pricing would have came through They're the exclusive reseller to government agencies.
Do we currently have an AutoCAD software policy or software now?
No. Only prior AutoCAD drawings in parts of our code.
So, how do you do that? Just depend on the engineering firm to provide you what you need?
I, so far, I can only look at paper drawings, the paper sets. I can't look into the actual electronic drawings. And anything that I've plotted, I've done on my handheld computer. My calculator from home, not.
Make a motion that we approve the recommendation for the purchase of software in the amount of $4,756.52 from Seller Instrument, Sailor?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flank, for the approval to purchase an AutoCAD software system from Seller. Is that right, Siler?
Siler.
Seller Instruments, in the amount of $4,756.52. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Anything else, Guy? Or not Guy, Jack? I'm looking at Guy and.
Just to add that, if we purchase it prior to the 24th, there's an additional $400 rebate.
Rebate on that.
You can put that to next year's subscription.
Go towards that, yes. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gievers?
Evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is the annual department report. If you have any questions?
What's the difference between affluent and affluent?
Influent is what comes in, affluent is what goes out.
You must be adding a lot to it going out, huh?
Well, I was going to say, yeah. I think that'd be kind of even, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
We have a storm basin on top of the hill, and it's not metered, so if the flow comes in, it pushes us up to the storm hill. I can take our pumps and get the time that the pump ran, and then get the pump, how much it produces when it pumps, and do the math, and it'll give me how much we pumped to the top of the hill.
So, the difference is stormwater?
Yeah. I and I have heavy flow.
I mean, what we're talking about is, there's, what is it, 500 million gallons coming in, and 622 million gallons going out, so you would think they'd be the same, but.
And that's the reason why, and then the top of the hill, it'll hold, I think, 5.5 million gallons, and we'll fill that up quite a bit during the year.
Also looking at your manhole inspections?
Yes.
We've been working on manhole, raising manhole levels, so stormwater doesn't go in for years. Are we close to getting it done?
Plan on working on that, yes. I mean, raising them to street level, we raised a bunch of manholes, not last year, but I believe the year before, to get them out of low-lying areas, and now our next step is to get the ones that are on the street and get them raised up.
I guess my point is, we've been doing this for 20 years, it's always been a hungry project. Have you ever reached a point where all the manholes are going to be where they should be height-wise?
They quit raising the road.
What a come along.
Originally, if we get a manhole set in position with even with the road, and then they come in and regrade the road, or we add two inches to it, you can get a rider ring and adjust to that. But there's, there's quite a few in town that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Any other questions on the annual report for Guy? How about the water tires?
On which?
Painting and engineering.
Can I slip one in on you? We had a clarifier at the Water Treatment Plant, I'm just kind of giving you enough to date.
Okay.
That broke.
Clarifier broke?
Clarifier. Remember that round thing with the arm going round? Well, the arm broke and it fell inside. Hagman, and it needs to be addressed right away. The mayor came in today, I believe, to cite an emergency P.O., and Hagman's going to repair that for us for $13,315, and he can start on it right away. The clarifiers, where the sludge settles into the clarifier, with all the snow melting and the water temperature getting cold without the I and I, we have a hard time with our sludge settling right now. We have two clarifiers, one's the newer one, and we're working off the old one. We need to get the newer one, the bigger one, back online, so we've been fighting that down there. So, that needs to be addressed. They said they're going to start on it right away.
Got a lot of expensive toys down there, huh?
Yes, we do.
I didn't mean to just sneak that one in there, but.
No, but this was a no-brainer, we didn't have a choice.
It's got to be done.
It's got to be done right now.
Wish I would've known it before you put Jack's software.
That's why Jack got ahead of him.
Yeah.
Brad didn't have a chance.
All right. How about the water tar painting?
Water tower painting, consolidating engineer, it's for a task leader, for to paint the towers. Part of the issue we have with the towers, they have lead on the outside, so they need to be sandblasted and cleaned, and they'll have to tarp the towers, sandblast, and keep track of how much debris is removed. And for the engineering on that part of it to do well for in six, that's the inspection put out for bid, $46,000, and that's a turnkey. They take care of, they pick the contractor, and then they go through us, make sure we accept it. At the removal of the existing exterior coating, prepare the bids, specifications, coatings, including the graphics, and the biggest part of it is the inspection. That's where a big hunk of the money comes in at.
Because of the lead-based paint?
And to make sure that it's done right, because we're going to spend $450,000 to paint the towers, and if it ain't done right in five years, a hunk of it peels off, I don't want that one on me.
So, what's the total cost on this? Because the ordinance doesn't, the proposed ordinance doesn't have, or the bill number doesn't have the dollar on it?
$46,600 U.S. dollars.
Compensation, section three.
Okay. Ready to talk about Hickory Lick?
I am.
Unless there's any other questions on the water tar painting. Ready? Yep?
We received 14 RFQs for the Hickory Lick Street project. We've chosen two engineers that scored the highest in the rating based on the information that was sent to the city. The Wise Design Group out of Ellisville, Missouri, and Cochrane Engineering out of Wentzville scored the highest. I'd like to get approval for preliminary engineering and a cost construction with the two firms and proceed with the lowest-cost firm.
Make a motion to approve going out for, I guess, bids for, I guess, architecture of engineering?
Equipment. Yeah, it'll be a.
Project from the two highest-scoring firms.
Is that what he's looking for?
Isn't that what you're looking for? You're looking for approval to get approved.
You go out and ask for prices and then select the lowest price if they need the qualifications that we're looking for.
So, this number here, the 167 and the 164, you have listed criteria that they had to comply with, with a point scale against it to build up to that?
That's correct. The experience and technical capacity and capability and past record of performance. And we take each one, and we go through a book that they send us and grade them.
Okay.
And it's for engineers, stethoscope, and you choose them, you have to do an RF2, grade them, pick the top two, and then you can request a bid.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay, we got a motion on the fourth from Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flank, to, for approval of the, for engineering for the Hickory Lick project, to request bids from the top two companies, which is Cochrane Engineering and Wees Design Group. Is that a, is that the way the motion needs to be read? For bids from the top two engineering companies. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absent. Anything else, Mr. Gievers?
I believe I said, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Chief Hottishell, chief of police report.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The first thing I have this evening is the police department's annual summary. Couple of points to note here, one that I'm pretty happy with, and that is the 3% improvement in, or decrease actually, in euthanases within the animal shelter between last year and this year. Of the 331 impoundments that we had this year, 79% of those were sent to another shelter or returned to owner or adopted out of the facility. So, that's actually an improvement. We did have a decline in successful clearance rate in the detective bureau, a little over 6% decline. That's something that we're going to do a close analysis on and figure out if we need to put additional resources into the bureau.
What does that mean exactly, when you say that? You had a decline in?
Cases that were successfully solved by the detective bureau. I haven't actually found the cause for that at this point. I know we've sent, you know, at least 20 cases to the state PA last year. to the state PA last year. They spent a lot of time doing background investigations, but this is something that concerns me and something that we'll be working on this...
What's typical? I mean, you're concerned because it went down compared to the prior year, but what is typical, do you know?
Well, the 69%, you know, closer to 70%, I would be much happier with. So, you know, obviously, that's something that concerns me, and we're gonna look at that going forward in 2014.
Well, I thought it was interesting, it was your summary page, the highlights, you know, the number of arrests is down slightly from last year, the number of reports written is down from last year, like I said, the impounding is, we talked about that, or other than service calls, though, seem to be basically the same.
Right.
So we didn't see a real uptick in that significantly over the last year, so I think that's...
Something to take into consideration there is, you know, we are two less in the police department, at least for six months of the year.
Okay. But, and one of the things that doesn't make sense to me is, how do the calls to service, it doesn't seem should be dependent on how many police officers you have, other than traffic stops?
Right. I mean, proactive numbers are included in that number. So I believe that that accounts for a good number of the difference in that number.
So when we talk about calls to service, that is not necessarily individuals calling and requesting a police presence. That is mainly traffic enforcement.
Calls for service are not mainly traffic enforcement?
No. I'm saying when you talk about numbers going down because manpower is down, that is, that difference is mainly gonna be in traffic stops.
Yes.
Okay.
And pedestrian checks, and, you know, anything that's sort of proactive. Any other questions? The other thing I have this evening is requesting approval to hire Kurt Smith. Kurt comes to us with 18-plus years of experience as a police officer. He worked for the cities of O'Fallon, Creedcor, and Westergroves. Took a break from police work for a while due to some family commitment issues, and actually went into teaching. He's currently still an instructor at the Police Academy, and also, I believe, on staff at, I thought he was on staff at a college as well, still, I don't recall the background. You know, he brings a lot of experience to the table, and obviously, his time at the Police Academy is valuable as well.
Second motion, we hire Kurt Smith at $16.73 per hour as a police officer?
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for the approval to hire Kurt Smith at $16.73 an hour as a police officer.
One question, Mayor.
Yes, you may.
Is that the, that's the starting rate?
Yeah, and then 17.20 after I came.
Right.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent.
Thank you all.
Any other questions for the chief or attorney-laws? Browns and maintenance director, Brad Busickrus.
Good evening, Board and Mayor. You have the yearly maintenance report for the year.
I have to ask, 'cause I don't know. What are the decoys about? Decoys, what are we doing there?
Pickup and...
Decorations, pickup.
Oh, decorations. Trapping something, I'm sorry. Hey, it's getting late, give me a break. I wasn't gonna ask that.
So we're curious as to what the first word of the report is. Abbreviation for...
Where we at?
Antero.
Undercast.
Antero, that's our maintenance software.
Oh.
That's, the guy and I both have the same one for, does maintenance on our vehicles, tells us when to do, change, you know, check this, check that. That's just what we just use it as.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, how about update on the streetlight repair on Hawthorne?
Well, we were gonna do it Monday, but then Ameren had a holiday. We were gonna do it today, and they were ordered not to leave the building, so we're, as soon as it warms up, we're, we're a day that I can get the VAC truck out and not have it freeze up, we're gonna be doing it, so. As soon as we can find out something, and they are very confident that they can find it, so.
Just need the weather to cooperate a little bit.
Yes, that's all we need.
Anything else for Brad? Anything? Brad, you got anything else for the board?
No, I sure don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melody, you got anything for the board?
Just the annual report for the office from the city clerk.
Okay. Let me get mine loaded here.
Eighty-five minutes.
I don't think people realize how many, how many tasks that you undertake. I mean, the city clerk, to make 85 meetings, including many of them after hours, in addition to your normal daily duties, until you see it in the annual report, you kind of lose track of that.
Good point. We appreciate it.
Let me ask you another question. I mean, sometimes you get the impression that everybody whines about the city and complains, but on your report, it says citizen complaint seven.
That would be actual filed complaints that they come in and do. It's not, if I get like a complaint for code enforcement or something that goes to the police department, I send those to those departments to take care of.
Oh, so this was stuff you handled yourself on your department?
Correct.
Okay.
And these were written complaints?
Yes.
But that written complaint could impact another department, or is this just for your department?
It was cemetery complaints.
Cemetery complaints.
Anything else for Melody?
Hopefully not complaints of the occupants, right.
Is that all you got, Melody? Thank you.
Chris, did you hear that?
On item 16, resolution number 301, I might give you, give the board just a brief update on that. I've received a call from the governor's office, from Governor Nixon, and he asked that the city give their support to rebuilding the State Mental Institution Hospital at Fulton, Missouri. Any of you that's visited that State Mental Hospital in the last few years understand it needs to be rebuilt. It's in horrible shape, and so I'm asking for your approval of revolution, or resolution 301.
Just as a side note, my wife and daughter are extremely active in prison ministry work, and a lot of people are incarcerated in prisons who probably should be in a mental hospital because of issues, but that's, as you, if the state cuts back facilities and that, it's easier to put them in a prison than to put them in a mental hospital. So I think this really has some strong applications that helps both areas.
Good, good side point.
So I'm making a motion to be approve resolution 301. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for the approval of resolution 301. We need, you need to read that, if you wanna read it.
Resolution by the city of Warrenton, Missouri to support the Fulton State Hospital construction project.
Any other concerns or questions? Could I have a roll call of all of that?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absent. Okay, I'm into bills to ordinances, bill number 05-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 05-14.
With the changes.
Is this gonna be with the change?
Oh, yeah.
This has to be with the changes.
I would ask that you...
Subject to the change.
Subject to the change, okay.
And it's just following the license issue instead of prior to a license document.
Is that Alderman Ock's motion?
My motion.
Your motion, and who was our second, or did we have a second?
Yeah, give him...
You're starting?
I can't.
I thought he did.
I don't care. All right, Alderman Clark made a motion, Alderman Ock seconded.
No, we called for the first reading.
First reading.
Pardon?
First reading.
Oh, first reading, okay, I'm sorry. All right, first reading, go ahead.
In ordinance amending and readapting chapter 608 Farmers Market License of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 05-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second final reading and passage of bill number, what is it, number 05-14.
In ordinance amending and readapting chapter 608 Farmers Market License of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Bill number 06-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 05-...
06.
06-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 06-14.
In ordinance adding a new section to chapter 500 Building Regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri relating to demolition.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 06-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Kessler Lee for second and final reading and passage of bill number 06-14.
In ordinance adding a new section to chapter 500 Building Regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri relating to demolition.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absent. First reading of, or, yeah, first reading of bill number 07-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 07-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 07-14.
In ordinance amending section 500.110 Amendments to International Building Code of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 07-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second reading and final and passage of bill number 07-14.
In ordinance amending section 500.110 Amendments to International Building Code of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absent. First reading of bill number 08-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 08-14.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Kessler Lee?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay. For first reading of bill number 08-14.
In ordinance calling a bond election in the city of Warrenton, Missouri and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 08-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Ock for second and final reading and passage of bill number 08-14.
In ordinance calling a bond election in the city of Warrenton, Missouri and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absent.
Call for the first reading of bill number 09-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 09-14.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Gonzalez Companies LLC and the city of Warrenton, Missouri for tank painting for tanks at well numbers four and six.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 09-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of bill number 09-14.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Gonzalez Companies LLC and the city of Warrenton, Missouri for tank painting for tanks at wells numbers four and six.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absent.
Call for the first reading of bill number 10-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 10-14.
In ordinance repealing ordinance number 2124 imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 1.75%.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 10-14.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Kessler Lee for second and final reading and passage of bill number 10-14.
In ordinance repealing ordinance number 2124 imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 1.75%.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Entertained a motion for adjournment unless there's something else we're missing?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to adjourn. All those in